... 24th where you can come in costume, dance with friends, and enjoy a frightfully fun night. Next, on Friday, October tenth, we have our issues plays at seven PM starring some great student actors for a powerful performance. Thank you all for all that you do to help support our program's actualiness.
Great job. Thank you so much. Dr. Lee, anything you want to add to that?
I can't do any as good as she did. Excellent job. Thank you.
Terrific. All right, and for Murphy Addison Schenetzler? Did I do that correctly? You can correct me. You won't offend me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Addison Schenetzler, and I'm an eighth grader at Murphy Middle School. The beginning of our year has been busy but so much fun. My classes this year have been challenging yet rewarding. In technology, eighth graders are working on a project to design and build our own miniature bridges. We are planning to test them next week, and we are very excited. All of our clubs are in full effect, and everyone is enjoying them. The new sixth and seventh graders have been making our clubs more enjoyable, and they even started some of their own, like the Running Club. Last week, Murphy had Spirit Week, and it was a blast. I think a favorite may have been anything but a backpack day. There were many creative and fun ideas, like sleds and coolers. On Friday, the end of Spirit Week, Murphy held a rec night with over one hundred and fifty students in attendance. We enjoyed basketball, volleyball, a DJ, and pizza. Students enjoyed participating in the homecoming carnival as well, where the student government organized face painting and carnival games. Recently, Murphy also hosted a breakfast to welcome new students to the school. I had the pleasure of meeting some students from around the globe, including Taiwan, Turkey, China, and Bangladesh, as well as students from across the United States. Some upcoming events we are looking forward to include Unity Day, where there will be interactive games and activities for everyone to enjoy. We are also excited for our first middle school Halloween dance later this month. Thank you all for letting me tell you some of the great things happening at Murphy's Middle School.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Mr. Vizzo, do you wish to add anything?
Nope, just that I cannot top that. Great job.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. So we will circle back now to our elementary schools. Arrowhead, Ms. Ruffley.
Hello. Arrowhead has had a great start to the new year. The year was kicked off with a very successful back-to-school movie night sponsored by the PTA. The character trait for September was kindness, and for October is compassion. To further promote these traits during the month, the Pritzmoorman Assistant Principal Jewried Alouds to the students. So far this year, Arrowhead has begun bus awards for positive behaviors, had school pictures, the students participated in the scholastic book fair, they started family connect nights, and are beginning before and after school clubs. They also have food truck Fridays for the staff. The rest of October is very busy for the students, and they have many fun activities planned, such as the PTA Harvest Festival, Unity Week, the fifth grade trunk and treat, the fifth grade Internet Safety Assembly, the kindergarten field trip to Benner's Farm, and Halloween parties and parades throughout the school.
Thank you so much. All right, Minnesaki, Dr. Kerman.
The Welcome Back Carnival on September twenty-sixth was a huge success. Our fifth grade did an amazing job of designing fun activities for our families and raised funds to support all of their fifth grade festivities. Mrs. Mizell was a good sport in the dunk tank. Clubs are starting this month. We are excited to offer many exciting after-school opportunities for our second through fifth graders. Some of this year's new clubs are a multicultural club, a nature club, an E&amp;L homework club, and a play club. We are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month this week with a competitive game of Guess Who, and highlighting our Spanish-speaking students on their announcement. On October twenty-second, we would like to invite you to come in to be into... Oh, it's me. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Nasaque, Mr. Das. Oh, sorry, Mount, Ms. Ruffley. I apologize.
Hello again. For Mount, they've had a great start to the school year. Our opening went really well, and it was wonderful to see such a strong turnout for our annual back-to-school night. The PPS initiative is off and running, and students have already begun being recognized each week for following behavioral expectations. They also kicked off the year with an awesome PTA-sponsored BMX Bike Assembly that shared important messages about inclusivity and standing up against bullying. Next week, they're excited to have their school club starting up, giving students even more opportunities to get involved and connected to one another.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to Nasaque.
So the first day of school was a great success. Storybrooke athletes greeted our students in the bus circle, so it was a wonderful bridge between the community and the school. The students planted flags in the bus circle in remembrance of nine eleven. The PTA hosted a back-to-school movie night, and the movie was Lilo and Stitch. It was great. Watching it again after a long time was a great first event. Many Nasaque students and families were in attendance, and I was able to meet them. It was fantastic. Meet the Teacher Night was a bustling success, and the students dressed their best for Picture Day on nine-thirtieth and October first. To look forward to something, music rehearsals have begun, and our music teacher is already very impressed with our students' talents, and we're looking forward to the rest of the clubs for students in grades two through five starting in October.
Thank you so much. All right, and I've got Satake. Rocks the Rabbit visited the Satake students to celebrate their excellent behavior during the first month of school. The students and staff danced their way to class to celebrate. The students attended an assembly hosted by Mrs. Prada and Mrs. Farley, which outlined the ways they can demonstrate Rocks' behaviors in various settings throughout the day. Satake kicked off the first mask reader event of the year. Students crossed the building, listened to a mystery reader share a story, and had to guess who was behind the mask. Satake celebrated Start With Hello Week. Focus is to build connections, promote kindness, and help students feel included and supported. Students participated in a variety of activities throughout the week, including wearing a name tag and saying hello to someone new, wearing green and gold to promote unity. Students also took the Start With Hello Promise pledge, which encourages students to reach out to someone who may feel left out, alone, or isolated, and be an upstander when need be. So thank you, everybody, for our elementary schools, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Bach for a little bit more on the high school and the academy.
Sure. So with the high school, I think Katie did a great job. The only thing I'd add is this coming Thursday and Friday, so that's this week, all freshmen and sophomore students are going to participate in a Meet the Principal Assembly as part of freshman/sophomore seminar program. So students will have the opportunity to meet the principal, the guidance counselors, and other administrators in small groups, and to get to know the building leadership and...[321.12]
Twenty-fourth, where you can come in costume, dance with friends, and enjoy a frightfully fun night. Next, on Friday, October tenth, we have our issues plays at seven PM starring some great student actors for a powerful performance. Thank you all for all that you do to help support our program's actualiness.
Thank you so much. Dr. Lee, anything you want to add to that?
I can't do any. As good as she is, excellent job. Thank you.
Terrific. All right. And for Murphy Addison Schenetzler? Did I do that correctly? You can correct me. You won't offend me.
My name is Addison Schenetzler, and I'm an eighth grader at Murphy Middle School. The beginning of our year has been busy but so much fun. My classes this year have been challenging yet rewarding. In technology, eighth graders are working on a project to design and build our own miniature bridges. We are planning to test them next week, and we are very excited. All of our clubs are in full effect, and everyone is enjoying them. The new sixth and seventh graders have been making our clubs more enjoyable, and they even started some of their own, like the Running Club. Last week, Murphy had Spirit Week, and it was a blast. I think a favorite may have been anything but a backpack day. There were many creative and fun ideas, like sleds and coolers. On Friday, the end of Spirit Week, Murphy held a rec night with over one hundred and fifty students in attendance. We enjoyed basketball, volleyball, a DJ, and pizza. Students enjoyed participating in the homecoming carnival as well, where the student government organized face painting and carnival games. Recently, Murphy also hosted a breakfast to welcome new students to the school. I had the pleasure of meeting some students from around the globe, including Taiwan, Turkey, China, and Bangladesh, as well as students from across the United States. Some upcoming events we are looking forward to include Unity Day, where there will be interactive games and activities for everyone to enjoy. We are also excited for our first middle school Halloween dance later this month. Thank you all for letting me tell you some of the great things happening at Murphy's Middle School.
Thank you so much. Mr. Vizzo, do you wish to add anything?
Nope. Just that I cannot top that. Great job.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. So we will circle back now to our elementary schools. Arrowhead, Ms. Ruffley.
Hello. Arrowhead has had a great start to the new year. The year was kicked off with a very successful back-to-school movie night sponsored by the PTA. The character trait for September was kindness, and for October is compassion. To further promote these traits during the month, the Pritzmoorman Assistant Principal drew it alouds to the students. So far this year, Arrowhead has begun bus awards for positive behaviors, had school pictures, the students participated in the Scholastic Book Fair, they started family connect nights, and are beginning before and after school clubs. They also have food truck Fridays for the staff. The rest of October is very busy for the students, and they have many fun activities planned, such as the PTA Harvest Festival, Unity Week, the fifth grade trunk and treat, the fifth grade Internet Safety Assembly, the kindergarten field trip to Benner's Farm, and Halloween parties and parades throughout the school.
Thank you so much. All right. Minne Saki, Dr. Kerman.
The Welcome Back Carnival on September twenty-sixth was a huge success. Our fifth grade did an amazing job of designing fun activities for our families and raised funds to support all of their fifth grade festivities. Mrs. Mizell was a good sport in the dunk tank. Clubs are starting this month. We are excited to offer many exciting after-school opportunities for our second through fifth graders. Some of this year's new clubs are a multicultural club, a nature club, an E&amp;L homework club, and a play club. We are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month this week with a competitive game of Guess Who, and highlighting our Spanish-speaking students on their announcement. On October twenty-second, we would like to invite you to come in to be into... Oh, it's me. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Nasa Keg, Mr. Das. Oh, sorry. Mount, Ms. Ruffley. I apologize.
Hello again. For Mount, they've had a great start to the school year. Our opening went really well, and it was wonderful to see such a strong turnout for our annual back-to-school night. The PPS initiative is off and running, and students have already begun being recognized each week for following behavioral expectations. They also kicked off the year with an awesome PTA-sponsored BMX Bike Assembly that shared important messages about inclusivity and standing up against bullying. Next week, they're excited to have their school club starting up, giving students even more opportunities to get involved and connected to one another.
Thank you. Okay. Now we go to Nasa Keg.
So the first day of school was a great success. Stony Brook Athletes greeted us students in the bus circle, so it was a wonderful bridge between the community and the school. The students planted flags in the bus circle in remembrance of nine eleven. The PTA hosted a back-to-school movie night, and the movie was Lilo and Stitch. It was great. Watching it again after a long time. It was a great first event. Many Nasa Keg students and families were in attendance, and I was able to meet them. It was fantastic. Meet the Teacher Night was a bustling success, and the students dressed their best for Picture Day on nine-thirtieth and October first. To look forward to something, music rehearsals have begun, and our music teachers are already very impressed with our students' talents. And we're looking forward to the rest of the clubs for students in grades two through five, starting in October.
Thank you so much. All right. And I've got Satake. Rocks the Rabbit visited the Satake students to celebrate their excellent behavior during the first month of school. The students and staff danced their way to class to celebrate. The students attended an assembly hosted by Mrs. Prada and Mrs. Farley, which outlined the ways they can demonstrate Rock's behaviors in various settings throughout the day. Satake kicked off the first Mask Reader Event of the year. Students crossed the building, listened to a mystery reader, share a story, and had to guess who was behind the mask. Satake celebrated Start With Hello Week. Focus is to build connections, promote kindness, and help students feel included and supported. Students participated in a variety of activities throughout the week, including wearing a name tag and saying hello to someone new, wearing green and gold to promote unity. Students also took the Start With Hello Promise pledge, which encourages students to reach out to someone who may feel left out, alone, or isolated, and be an upstander when need be. So thank you, everybody, for our elementary schools, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Bach for a little bit more on the high school and the academy.
Sure. So with the high school, I think Katie did a great job. The only thing I'd add is this coming Thursday and Friday, so that's this week, all freshmen and sophomore students are going to participate in a Meet the Principal Assembly as part of freshman-sophomore seminar program. So students will have the opportunity to meet the principal, the guidance counselors, and other administrators in small groups, and to get to know the building leadership and continue their orientation toward Melville. For the academy, the Three Village Academy started the year off on a positive note with a back-to-school barbecue on the first Friday of the year. Our new students are engaging eagerly with each other and with the school staff. On Friday, the twenty-sixth, the school had its first field trip, going fishing, which is a true academy tradition. As always, it was a great day. The academy's astronomy and earth science students were able to take advantage of some of the clear September skies and use a high-power telescope to do some great stargazing. Another positive change, which I'm happy to hear, is that the cellphone ban seems to be helping students to socialize more easily at school, especially during their lunch period. I'm happy about that. In the weeks to come, the seniors will explore different post-secondary options, including taking advantage of the free application to SUNY Week and gaining insight into the supports available through Access VR. And then finally, the entire school community is looking forward to the School Oktoberfest, which is a trip to a pumpkin farm and Halloween Spirit Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everybody, for your excellent reports. Great job. And by the way, you guys don't have to stay. The student reps, you can go home. Will not hurt our feelings at all. All right. We're going to move on now to six D, our task force presentation from Dr. Scanlon.
Thank you very much. So last school year, we had issues with some anti-Semitic remarks being made by students in our middle level, and we decided that we weren't going to let this continue in our district and try to address it in a positive way. So we decided to formulate the Task Force, Superintendent's Task Force on Anti-Semitism, Racism, and Hate Speech. So how did this come about? So, as you said, a response to the issues that were occurring. We sent out a volunteer application. We had ninety-seven people respond to this. We placed the first forty-two on the initial task force. This comprised representatives in the parent community, regular community, just residents in the district, students, administration faculty, and staff. Preparation for this. The meetings occurred with the local, state, national, international organizations prior to the first meeting. It was wonderful to see the outpouring of support that we received across the board. I literally was on teleconferences with organizations from Europe, Israel, across the nation, the Middle East, you name it. Some of the groups we've listed here that were included, and we still, every day, get more that keep sending us information to help support us in any of the initiatives we're trying to take place in the district. So the first meeting was quite cathartic. The first forty-two people came in and expressed a lot of concerns with things that they've witnessed personally or had heard, some of which we had dispelled that were just strictly rumor, but others were certainly disconcerting. Some of these, many of these incidents were not reported to administration at all, and what we found by some of the students within the meeting, they expressed fear and anxiety of coming to school and being ostracized because of being different from what they felt were different members of the population. So out of all the things I heard that evening, that was the most concerning to me, that our students had that sentiment when they were coming to school. And we actually made that part of our discussions even this year when we did the Welcome Back to all of our faculty and staff on the first day for them, that we do not want anyone, any student, any staff member, feeling this way. So as a response to our first meeting, we decided that the group was just way too large, and we divided into subgroups. So the four subgroups that formulated based upon the conversation there, one was on antisemitism, one on Islamophobia, one on racism, and this new term, maybe not new to some folks, but new to some of the people in the district, othering, which encapsulates many different groups. We met with consultants from the Westchester County Holocaust Center, which they have been down before with us and have assisted us. They do a lot of the programming for the Glencoe Holocaust Museum as well. The meetings with the subgroups occurred on June eleventh, June twenty-fifth, and July second, and July seventeenth. So this went all the way through the summer. Those individual groups, some were much more well-attended than others. We had the largest groups for the antisemitism and Islamophobia, and then the racism group got a little smaller, and the othering was a little smaller than that. So the other piece that happened, we met with the students from the committee. So we went to the high school, met with the students and their guidance counselors, and tried to see what they thought might be a good way to try to address this within the school community. So some of the outcomes and improvements in the practices that occurred out of all this so far, and we have a long way to go. So as we said right from the get-go with this, this is going to be ongoing and systemic. This isn't going to be a one-shot deal where we do it, and then we wait and see if something else is going to happen again. We're going to continue to do this and embed this within all the wonderful things that we do within our community here and within the students, some of the great things you heard tonight from the students that came up here. We reconvened the Code of Conduct Committee after these meetings, and we decided to open up the first issue with addressing how discipline is addressed with these situations, that we would not take this lightly, that it wouldn't be a simple in-school suspension or a call home, that this would be risen to the same level that we consider with fighting and other major issues like drug possession in the schools. So we have to remember, though, we are an educational institution, so part of that is also working with the students, trying to understand why are they having these expressions. We are very blessed in this community. We, by far, have more social workers, psychologists, and counselors than most districts in all of Long Island. So we are very lucky that way, and that helps us a great deal when we're trying to address these things. We look for their expertise when we do programming and try to have programs for the students within the schools. Communications had sent on reporting mechanisms, such as the Safe Schools Hotline and DASSA, because one of the outcrops of the community was some people felt that they weren't familiar with how the DASSA process worked, and some felt that they didn't have a way to express some of their concerns with any degree of anonymity. So the Safe School Hotline has been around for a long time. This is not something new. We've had this in place, and it's been across many school districts throughout the state of New York. So it goes pretty much underutilized. So within our communications about welcoming back students for the year, we included the Safe Schools Hotline on that. We also, when we redid our website, we put it on that. Ms. Nash, who's our Director of Public Relations, has been putting it into some of the social media pieces that we have put out as well. We're in the process of reviewing the curriculum in different areas, some of which are mandatory from the state of New York, and some of which are things that we have created within Three Village alone. We are planning a peer mentoring program, which is sort of like a peer mediation program with students as well. We had this in the past as part of the disciplinary process. Before we start to look to suspend a student, perhaps maybe having that peer mediation piece go into effect would help students mitigate some of their own issues and teach them a life skill that would help them for the rest of their lives. So the county and the town have wonderful programs with the Youth Bureau, so we're going to be trying to partner with them to get these things up and running. We're also looking to have some meetings with some of the clubs at the high school, and this is just a short list. There's others to come, but this is just some of the ones we're looking at setting up. And Mr. Holone has been wonderful in helping me communicate with some of the advisors on this about what the intent is here. We want to really hear from them, and if we're going to start this peer mediation program, this is going to be open to all students to apply, not just select a few students from different areas. But we want to go to these particular clubs right now, and as you said, expand out to some of the other wonderful groups that we have out there. Although it's October, it's still early in the school year for some of the clubs to even have some of their meetings, so they haven't gotten off the ground yet, so we're trying to meet them where they're at, and so we can start to formulate some of these things. But it's very important for us to make the connection with the students on these things and get their input on what they would like to see from the levels of experience they've had. Most of our students have been with us since they were in nursery, so from four years old on up, they've been through this system, so they've seen it all. They've been in the different buildings. They probably could tell us more than some of the adults could figure out. And sometimes we get more from them than we do from the parents or the people that are in the building that are working there. So we want to be open to listening to what the students have to say. So Katie, it's on you guys, all right? Now, just to give you an example, I know it's a little hard to read from on this slide, but we do have the Positive Behavioral Adventure System in this district. This is just a chart that we did last year as a kind of to give ourselves a stop and say, what are we doing? And this is filled with some wonderful activities and things that we do across the different buildings in the district. You heard about some of them tonight from the board members who are doing the representative reports and the school news, but this is not a one-shot deal. Again, we do this every year, every month. There's so many different activities. There's a lot of studies that show that the more students are involved with their schools, the more successful they are in schools. So we want to keep promoting those ideas with our students to get involved, become part of the school environment, to give their input, to be able to become the leaders that we know they can become within the district. And the only way we're going to stop the hate that goes on is by countering it with the love and support that we receive, both from the school itself, their parents, and the community at large. So what's going to happen next? The next subgroup meetings are going to be coming up shortly. We met with Ms. Rojenschwig, myself, and Dr. Cohen, met with the new Vice President for Diversity and Equity from Stony Brook University. She's a wonderful person. She has experienced being a town council president, a board member in another state. Her husband was a judge and also a Board of Education member. So we were trying to get them to come. They live in Three Village. We want to hear some of their input. She was a wonderful resource, and she's going to be joining our DEI committee, which will be meeting shortly this month. So the upcoming dates for the committees, we were trying to get the antisemitism meeting off first on October fifth, but there was a conflict with some meetings and some holidays going on, so it's now on December first. Islamophobia will be October twenty-eighth. Racism Committee will be November sixth, and the Othering Committee will be on November twelfth. And that's the report.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Scanlon as he walks back? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our items for board discussion, and absolutely.
Just for those watching or at home that wanted to read Dr. Scanlon's presentation and the PBIS Initiative page, we do put all of our presentations on our website, so you can take a look at it on there.
Yes, thank you. All right. Item seven A is our Budget Advisory Committee. Dr. Scanlon.
Yes. So we're going into, I think, our fifth year of having the Budget Advisory Committee. I'm trying to...
Yeah, fifth year, yeah.
Happy anniversary. So we're right back at it again. So we're looking to the board for a charge as we move forward. Any changes that the board wishes to make? I know last year, we started right around this time in October. It was a little too early, because in all honesty, we only have one of the many numbers that we have to get in order to help formulate our budget, so that's the ERS numbers are in. That's it. So we are planning on starting to look at this for November, and we just want to see where the board would like to go as far as membership and expectations.
So I'll just jump in and start. You know, we've been chatting a little informally about this. I think, I'm very appreciative of the BAC. I think there's been some really good things that have come out of it, and in principle, I think it's a great idea to have the community give us some feedback. But five years is a nice little chunk of a chapter, and so I think we probably want to regroup a little and say, well, how can we modify this to best serve the community and to serve the district? So I think one thing I would like to see is a shift from a short-term focus to a long-term focus, and I open it up to anyone else.
Yeah. Like we were talking before, this is, you know, every year when the committee got... I was able to serve for the last two years, right? And the charge is usually to look at the budget for that year, and all the discussions focus around that. And then we can have a question on, is it too early or too late? Because then we're waiting for the numbers to come in. We don't have the time necessarily to focus on things that would affect the district long-term, because we're so focused on that year's budget and the numbers. So I think it would be helpful, rather than the charge to the group being about that year's budget, to be about evaluating long-term needs of the district, look for things where we can optimize, or look for things where we can add on, or the board would consider, but definitely have a much, much more longer timeframe on that.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I mean, I think we do need to change the focus a little bit, because it's not fair to the BAC members, as well as administration, that probably gets a ton of emails from the BAC. We don't have enough time for the members to actually sit and look at the budget and make really good recommendations to the board, because it's just such a short time period. And so it's really not fair to anybody that's involved, and then everybody's rushing at the end to get something done. So looking at a long-range plan, I think, would be much better. Maybe we can run it a little bit longer during the year, because we're not doing it at a time crunch, and, you know, just to refocus it a little bit and give them a clearer charge on what everybody's jobs and duties should be on that committee. But I think we're going to continue to talk about that over the next month.
So? I agree. I think we definitely should go to long-term, because I think that's much smarter, and we'll also get much more information, get more information and good input from the BAC, and I think it's very, very smart to do that. Thank you.
And I agree. I remember sitting on the committee for two years, and I have to say, it's just too short of a time. You meet, you have meetings upon meetings upon meetings, but you need to talk about what's going to happen years from now. So I think the committee should focus more on that.
All right. So it sounds like we need a little bit more time to chew on this, so how about if we continue the conversation at the next meeting and work on the charge?
I think you have a wonderful example from the Property Analysis Committee that you formed last year, and their charge was to look at all the different properties that the district owns and provide some feedback to the board about potential long-term solutions with some of those things, from not just selling properties off, but also leasing properties and thinking how revenue can be brought into the district from that standpoint. So we concur that, you know, this would be a long-term concept.
Yeah, I like the idea. Actually, some of the not-so-palsive feedback I heard from past members are, the format we have is not so productive. We're not hearing constructive feedback, rather reviewing things. I mean, for budget, it's very common, people have different interests. It's very common, but once this type of meetings are becoming debating meetings, doesn't help us much, so it's really a good time for us to reflect and how to make it more productive for us.
I know it was mentioned about perhaps rebranding the committee name from BAC to a Long-Term Planning Committee, you know, an LTP? Is that how you... Well, like the little acronyms, Welcome to Education. If that works in everyone's favor as we move forward.
Absolutely. I think it makes sense, so...
Yeah. So I mean, in addition to the long-term planning, I did like some of the differential analysis they did, like comparing the proportion we spend on different parts of our budget compared with other districts. I thought that was useful. It's in the long-term sense, though, right? And of course, there will be differences, because there's unique things about our district, but getting explanations for those, and maybe they discover savings we can have there. That was very useful in the past.
I think there were a lot of useful things that came out of it, and I think it's helped all of us sort of, you know, shape the way that we look at things in a more broad way. So thank you again to everybody who has served, and stay tuned. We'll see what the new incarnation shall be. All right. Moving on to seven B, discussion about armed security. Dr. Scanlon.
So as you mentioned at the last meeting, per the board's charge, we've had negotiations with two of the units, the security unit and the administrative unit. We're still in the process of negotiating with the security unit at this time, and this is just to give the board a sense of, from a financial standpoint, what would be the commitment to this. We've been receiving quite a few responses of individuals with opinions both ways on this topic, which we're very appreciative of. We value the input of the members of the community. One of those concepts that came up a few times, which we addressed last year, Mr. Baum was instrumental in presenting things about metal detectors at schools, so it might be helpful to hear from him of what some of those things, how those things may look or feel for our district.
So someone always says to me, what do you think about metal detectors? I love them. I actually do, but in Madison Square Garden, not in Three Village, and I'll tell you why. A couple reasons. One, first of all, you know, the culture of Three Village is a very warm, open education process here, and we kind of pride ourselves with that. I just think the metal detector theory creates a much more correction facility type of entrance. Number two, it has to be at every single school. I was asked by a resident, well, why don't you put them at the high school? Well, I'm not just concerned about the high school. I'm concerned about the two middle schools and the elementary schools as well. It doesn't, a high school doesn't mean that's where the weapon would show up. When you have metal detectors, they have to be at numerous entrances, and if you go to a place like Madison Square Garden, you'll see several security people at that one metal detector, because you have to take things out of your pockets, you have to take things out of your backpack. It's, that's difficult. I don't have the staff for that. You know, we... You know, we already kind of reduced staff a little bit due to budget constraints, that's going to make it difficult. The other thing that I, that you really don't realize is the start time. It's going to take a tremendous amount of time to get everybody in the building. That's going to be difficult. I can't, we can't put the metal detectors into the building, far into the building to create that, but about bad weather, things like that. It's, it's just going to be, it's going to be a burden. It's got to be every school and every entrance. Then, the other flip side of that is staff. You know, we always worry about a student coming in with a weapon. There's no reason why we shouldn't be concerned about staff as well. And, you know, so all the teachers and all the support staff people are going to have to run through the metal detectors. And finally, as I said last year, and I, you know, this is from a law enforcement background, I would not want to be the security person at the metal detector that flags a student, and I do not have a weapon on. It's very, it's, it's a hazardous situation to confront a weapon without a weapon. Where do we go from there? Hey, you know, somebody's just going to pull out their Glock, and I have no protection? I don't think our security people would, would want to do that. And I, I wouldn't want to put them in that circumstance as well. Those are just a couple of my reasons. I love them, but not for our school.
If I may ask a question, I know a couple of people in the community have said, well, wouldn't it be so much less expensive? Can you just speak to the cost of metal detectors, in whatever fashion you just discussed, versus arming some security?
I can't even give you a guesstimate, because we would need so many metal detectors for the district. You know, I think the cost of the armed security, I think is transparent. It's around $200,000. We would spend a lot more than $200,000 on metal detectors.
Hi, have you talked to any of the districts that do have metal detectors? Because we've been talking to a few people in the community, and the incident that just happened at Uniondale, right? So their metal detectors picked up the gun, and they handled the situation. But have we talked to any of the school districts that have it? And how do they get their students in the building relatively?
Uniondale has a very small population in their school, so it's a little bit different. They're only focused on the one school. They're not focused on all the buildings. Again, I, I don't see that as a, I don't see that as a viable alternative. And they were lucky, and they were lucky that this...
I'm not saying that it's an alternative or not. I'm, I'm just curious, because people are asking me questions that, I mean, I know it's just at their high school. But they're getting all of their students into the high school relatively quickly, and are able to pick up different types of weapons that the kids bring in. I mean, so have, so do we know really how long it would take to get our students in? And if so, how do they do that? How many students do they have?
I don't know how many students they have. I know they have less than Ward Melville, that I do know. I actually spoke to them recently about this, and their, their take is that they felt lucky that they had unarmed people at the metal detector, and luckily, there was no confrontation with that. You know, again, I, that's, that's not the card I would like to play for our people.
Right, I, I understand that. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions regarding this. So it would be good to know, the districts that are using this, what they have in place. From what I understand, their SROs and their police department is relatively closer than Suffolk's. So it's very easy for them to call up and get somebody there relatively immediately, where we wouldn't have that. I mean, so I know there's different situations.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's the other thing, and I, I think I've talked about that, too, as well. Nassau County has a much more robust patrol force than Suffolk. Their jurisdiction, their geographic areas are much smaller than here. I, I just bring up, you know, one incidence, and, and I think you can, you can relate to this now, especially if you've driven on Nichols Road at 347. Tremendous amount of traffic. Again, if there's a car accident there, here's, here's where my problem is with this. The 6th precinct only has a couple of cars that cover our area. And take Sotoket Elementary. If there was a car accident at Nichols and 347, that's going to require the, all the patrol vehicles in the area to work that accident. It's a very difficult intersection. That's a long way away from our schools. We have nobody else coming. So there was a call, for, for those, it's, it's not, certainly not a secret, right? We had a call of a person with a gun in front of, now, single caller to Suffolk Police. Person in front of Ward Melville with a gun. That's the single 911 call came in. And I'm listening to this whole thing. Single call. Our people from the school district are heading in that direction. It turned out, the person, the caller, used our school as just a reference point. The person with the weapon was actually across the street at the Jewish Center. It was during the holiday, when they required, they had their armed security force there. Listen, I was in the 6th, I started my career in Suffolk Police in the 6th precinct. I will tell you, it took a while for a unit to get there. You know, listen, you know, I, I don't think we're going to get the same response as we were getting Nassau County, and I mean, I love the police department. We have one, we have two SROs now. We just, the 6th precinct just added a second SRO. I just think our timeframes are going to be delayed. I really do. I'm just, I'd say, it's a great tool, but it's not the answer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just think that's important, a piece of information for people to understand, that we do not have the same response times as Nassau County or other places, and we need to work around that issue as well.
They do great. The, the police are great with us. But we're tucked up in the corner of the, of the precinct. That, that also, you know, makes it, makes it a little bit different.
Jack, how many districts does the 6th precinct oversee with the two SROs?
Three Village, Port Jefferson, Mount Sinai, Longwood, Seacham, Little Country.
Comswog.
Comswog, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a, and, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of this district. The SROs very rarely have to come here. We, we have a very, you know, we have a great team, and we don't always require their services. And I know that they spend a tremendous amount of time in some of the other districts that I will not name. They spend entire days there. Here, we only meet them once in a while.
Any other questions for Mr. Baum? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Before we move away from this part of the conversation, I did want to say a couple things. First of all, we, we always appreciate information. We're a school. We like to learn things. So we're very appreciative of all the articles that have been shared. I think for the board's purposes and for the community's purposes, it'd be great if we could craft some kind of database and start dropping all of that into one place, so that anybody who wants to read can read.
Yes, we actually have put that in, it's in a draft form right now, with, Ms. Rubenstein has created it. We received articles both for and against armed security guards. So we're going to put all that information up on the website, under the board's web portion of the webpage, so the board, they know where to go. So it'll be on the board's section of the webpage. You'll click on that, there'll be a dropdown, and you'll see information regarding this. That will also include the two surveys that were done in district, and the results for that. And the, if anyone's interested in the statistical background of that, that will also be present for, for that as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And just before we come off this topic for the moment, I just wanted to say, I know a lot of people who may be watching sent in correspondence. Just point of clarification, if you want us to read it, it has to get here before 1:00, and it has to say, we want you to read this aloud. So we're, we're all going to read them.
It has to say, I'm sorry, public comments.
Right.
In the, in the title of the body, you know, title of the email.
So if you sent us something, and it didn't say that, we're all still going to read it and consider it. It's just, you're not going to hear it aloud tonight. So, and we'll circle back to that shortly. All right, we're going to move on now to...
Sue.
Yes?
Oh, sorry. Yes, no, I just wanted to make just a statement on this issue. So I've been thinking a lot about it. So I've expressed my reservations against armed guards in past meetings. So I just wanted to emphasize really how challenging it is to, to, to implement armed guards and do in a way that makes our kids safe. First of all, I want our kids to be safe. I think the people calling for armed guards, they also want our kids to be safe. And so that's, that's sort of the common ground. And the disagreement comes from, how can we achieve that? Right? Armed guards are fundamentally different than other security measures. Electronic door locks, ID checks, and bullet-resistant windows cannot harm a student. Having armed guards, however, requires the continuous presence of deadly force, and this comes with some level of risk of human error. Pilots make mistakes, surgeons make mistakes, humans make mistakes. And while I do believe we have an excellent security team, respectfully, they are human. There will be a risk of mistakes, even if it's small. So any improvement to security on a day if something were to occur, needs to be weighed against the added risk on the thousands of normal school days where nothing happens. As terrible as school shootings are, they are thankfully extremely rare. The exact frequency, of course, depends on the definition that you use. Education Week has like a middle-of-the-ground definition, which tracks a little under 50 incidents per year nationwide over the last couple of years. There's 12,500 school districts in the United States. If risks were spread uniformly across school districts, and by the way, it's not, New York is statistically safer than other states, and I think Three Village is above average in New York as well. But if it were just spread uniformly, then you could expect 50 incidents divided by 12,500 school districts, 250 years of normal school days for every incident that occurs. 250 years is a long time to say, no one will make a mistake. To put it in perspective, 250 years ago, George Washington was fighting for our country's independence. If we decide to implement armed guards, and we're picking people or creating procedures, keep in mind that challenge. No major mistakes should be possible for that span of time. That's an extremely high bar, which frankly, I believe it's not realistic. And it's not just the current security team, but whoever's here in 10, 20, 30 years, the next security team, and the one after that, which we know nothing about today. They must meet the same high standard. Anything less in adding armed guards will make our schools more dangerous. To be fair, one argument in favor of armed guards that I can see is that it does feel unsafe in today's world. My kids are in the schools, too, and as a parent, I do feel a real, real fear whenever I see the latest news story about a school shooting. And so if having armed guards gives parents peace of mind, and helps our children relax and learn, then that should be taken into account as part of this discussion. But if it's the feeling of safety rather than actual safety, I think it's fair to ask about the money, right? The cost we just heard, and also what, you know, the ballpark of the, the different plans I've seen, is it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. Do we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of unallocated money in our '25 to '26 budget? Recall that last year, we had a budget shortfall of millions of dollars due to increasing healthcare costs. Our superintendent, assistant superintendents took a 0% raise. Our administrators modified their union contracts and took a 0% raise. Our teachers took a 0% raise. And still, we had to cut TAs and other staff because there wasn't enough money. We reduced administrators and teachers. We removed the change to push back the high school start times, which parents have been fighting for, for years, to save money. We no longer have a 4th grade intellectually gifted program in our district. Rather than IG, we have 4th grade classrooms with 26 students. We have kindergarten classrooms with 23 students. I know other districts have it worse, and I know we have some of the best teachers who are professionals and will manage, but these are not numbers that I would expect in Three Village. Within our finite budget, I would rather we prioritize putting teachers in classrooms, not bringing guns into our schools.
All right, we're going to move on now to our NISBA resolutions. We thank in advance Dr. Lee for taking on this task again, and she's become our resident NISBA resolutions expert, so we appreciate that very much. So, Dr. Lee, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, so this year, there are a total of 20, I believe, 26 recommended, 23 recommended resolutions from NISBA, and an additional relative 11 not recommended resolutions. So in, by statistics, most recommended resolutions pass in the past. But the not recommended, only maybe one per year can pass, actually. So I would like to bring notice to the board about two recommended, because in this two resolution, our district is a bit different from other districts, in my view, as we actually have discussed. One is about pre-K, the other is about, let me see, so Resolution 2 and 4. If you do have your resolution, please take a look and see if our board also wants to recommend that, I mean, well, yes, on that or not. So if you go to Resolution number, number two, which is if resolved that New York State School Boards Association support legislation at the state and/or federal level, that would allow and enhance the sharing of services among school district and other municipal... I think we discussed about the sharing, and I wonder if we actually want to support that or not, because our district is really different from many others.
Thank you. So does anybody want to jump in on this? Is anyone opposed to it? Let's put it that way. Does anyone have an issue with the sharing of, of resources? You are opposed?
I'm opposed to sharing.
Okay, so just to clarify procedure, we would need four votes either way. If it's, if they're recommending it, we would need four votes to say, no, we do not go along with that recommendation, or vice versa.
Yeah, I just want to say, we had the, a vote and conversation about this last meeting, that we agreed to certain things that we would share and things that we would not share. And I think this goes along with that. We, we don't have an objection, or, or we didn't a couple of meetings ago, on sharing some things that are, that we approve of, and we have the budget for. So I don't know if I would nix that completely, because we do it already, right? We do it already with, like, I guess, what was, SALT was one of the things we were talking about. You know, we send our kids to BOSIs. We have some kids from different districts come in and take some math classes. So we do do that already. So I don't know if we should be saying no to everything. We say no to what we can't afford to do, nor we want to do.
Dr. Scanlon?
If I may, yes. So the, one of the things that's not clarified in these resolutions is, where's the money coming from? So all wonderful ideas. The taxes are very high in New York State, there's no doubt about that. And it's a vicious cycle. We, we have property taxes that help support schools. The schools go up, the property taxes increase, and it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse and worse. I believe it was Senator Baker, who no longer, that might be his name, Baker or Barker, I'm trying to remember now, opposed to change to that, how schools are funded in New York State, many, many years ago, and it was shot down. A lot of these proposals are going to get that same treatment, because in the state assembly and the senate, the city of New York has the supermajority and controls a lot of where the funding will go to a lot of these areas. In this particular case, if, you know, we're talking about the legalization plan, if sharing a service or having students take courses in that, one of the things that most people don't understand, if a student comes to our district or leaves our district and goes somewhere else, they pay what's called a non-resident tuition rate. That tuition rate is set by the state of New York. Mr. Carlson gets it each year, and we adjust accordingly. It's based on what it costs this district to educate a child if they were here, and that's what the other districts sending the student over would pay. They have not clarified yet if that's going to still exist, or what that would look like. So that's a problem for, for many of the public school administrators, like, where's the money coming from? So it shouldn't be that the taxpayers of Three Village are now paying for a student to come from another district here, when we're already paying already taxes for our own students here. And especially if those students take up class space in some of our classes, and on teams or clubs and those type of things. Clubs are a lot easier. Teams, a different story, especially when we start talking about people starting in playing time with folks, that always becomes an issue.
Yes, it goes.
But in classes, as Dr. Back just mentioned about, we want to make sure class sizes are reasonable. If that increases that, if we have to expand out another class to have a student come from another district, that's going to actually increase our costs. So we have to be very careful with this as we move forward.
That's exactly what, what my concern is. Once this becomes legislation level, any state mandate could cost us more rather than saving. So that's one resolution I would like to bring cautious of the board. Another one, just another one, is number four. This is about pre-K. So it's about New York State School Boards Association support incorporating pre-kindergarten funding into the school aid formula used for K-12. So I know we actually have a different situation with the pre-K. So I just wonder if we want to support that, or shouldn't support it.
Mr. Carlson, you want to chime in on that?
Well, sure, we're always in favor of more, more money for more education. So, yes, we would be recommend supporting, yes, more funding for universal pre-kindergarten. Yes, absolutely.
Before, before you, we're going to not let you off the hook for one second. So just for a moment, the thing that drives us all crazy when Newsday publishes its numbers, can you just explain a little bit about that, when they show how much funding we're getting?
Sure. So, so what's, what the, actually, the state education department started doing a few years ago was, so there's, there's universal pre-K aid. And what the state ed department does is it comes out with the maximum amount each district could possibly receive if it had a full-day universal pre-K program for all students. And what the state ed department started doing a few years ago was saying, well, what we're go, actually, I'm not even sure if it's the state ed department, it might be the state legislature, they include that maximum dollar amount in the state aid package. So, so it, it makes it look like every district is getting the full amount possible for universal pre-K aid as part of their state aid package. But that's, it's not true. They just don't. So it made it appear that the state is giving more money in state aid than it really is. So it's, it really skews the amount of state aid. So, and, you know, so when, when it says three, part of our state aid package, it says $1.6 million in pre-K aid. Well, no, we don't. In fact, last year was a 500, it's about $529,000 is what we actually received for our pre-K. So, anyway, but if we got the full amount, sure, that would be great. Yes. But it comes with a lot of strings attached.
I just had a question on that, like, today, the way it sits, if I remember right, for, we're operating a half-day program, correct?
Correct.
Because based on fees that we collect for some of the components, it's somewhat revenue neutral for us. If we were to sign on to this, does that continue to be the case?
Yeah, so, so the reason we do that the way we do is because, so we can't charge, we're a public school district, we cannot charge for an educational program, right? So we can't say, oh, we'll start a pre-K program and charge tuition. Can't do that. So, however, we can charge for things like after-school childcare, we could charge for enrichment programs, we could charge for those kind of things, like our summer rec program, our SAC program, those we could charge for. So what we can do is say, we're going to, and what we did, is we have a half-day enrichment program for four-year-olds that we can charge for. So we have a half-day, so what we do is we have a half-day pre-K program for four-year-olds that we cannot charge for. If you choose, you can say, okay, I want, I want my child to go to the half, free half-day pre, uh, pre-K program. I would also like to send my, and it's optional, you don't have to, send my child to the half-day enrichment program that I'll pay a fee for. And so the money that we get for that half-day enrichment program more than covers the cost of the half-day enrichment program piece, and it helps to offset the cost for the pre-K piece. And then the, the aid that we get on the pre-K part further helps to offset the cost for that. So if I, now I think to answer your question is, if we were to go to full-day pre-K, so we would get more aid, right? That's the good part. The bad part is we would not get any of that enrichment revenue. So, and the enrichment revenue that we take in is more than the additional aid we would get. So, so we would actually lose money, we'd get more aid, but we would lose revenue by doing that.
And a big part of that, just to understand, the full-day reimbursement for a student is $5,400. That amount has not gone up in over 20 years. So our half-K aid is $2,700. It's half the amount for the half-day program. And each year, we, we started collecting this three years ago, the half-day amount that we get, we have to file a waiver for, because they're definitely pushing for every district to go to a full-day program. And the expense for that goes up, obviously, when you have full-time teachers doing the program for the entire day. The goal, I believe, is in the very near future to have it mandated and then eventually have them transported. Now, if you have a four-year-old on a bus versus a older child, you know, a kindergartner on a bus, there are certain transportation requirements that have to be put into effect, restraints and seats, car seats and things. So, like, like the road of electrification of the buses, you know, they're, they're putting out things with, you know, a modicum of money going to support that. Another piece that comes up with this piece of funding, just for a second, I hear all the time, I actually had an argument with some of my family members, and they said, oh, I bought my lottery ticket, it's supporting education. It is. However, what the state does is, the money we get from the lottery, they reduce our aid by that amount. So, yes, it's wonderful that you're buying the lottery tickets to support education in New York State, but don't be fooled that the state is actually playing a shell game, like, the amount of aid they've committed to us, they're reducing down and supplementing it with the lottery money. So, and by the way, the mega millions and the other ones out there, they're, they're divided among multiple states.
And, and by the way, they don't, they don't try to disguise that either. And I mean, it's right in our state aid reports. They say, okay, you receive this much in, not just lottery, lottery aid, but now also the video, uh, lottery, uh, video terminals, gambling terminals, plus all the cannabis money now, same thing. They say, okay, here's how much you're getting from that. So since, since you're getting that, it's that much less we have to give you in regular state aid.
So I'll just ask the question again, is signing on to this proposal, is it, does it change the revenue story for us?
I can quickly answer that. This is not signing on, this is 300, more than 300 district voting to support NISBA's going forward to discuss with the state legislations. So it's really moving forward of some of the proposals, so we are just one of the more than 300 districts voting.
And, and our, our hope in this is that if, so this would be to endorse NISBA supporting that, which doesn't guarantee anything anyway, but even if it, if, so if NISBA supports this and it becomes ultimately law, our hope is that it would then change the formula to, to increase the formula, as Dr. Scanlon mentioned, that $5,400 per student per year hasn't, hasn't gone up in over 20 years. So hopefully, that would be some impetus to make some adjustments to that. And so it, it wouldn't, so it would make sense for districts to have the full-day program.
Does that increase our aid from that? It sounds like it does.
Yes, and that would be the, the hope, yeah.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Lee, unless you object, how about if I just quickly run through these and everybody just jump in if they have any comments, because I want to give Dr. Scanlon a chance to jump in as well. So, proposed Resolution 1, regarding opposing expanded mayoral control. Anybody have any issue with that standing? Okay. 2, regarding supporting legislation at the state or federal level that would allow and enhance the sharing of services, which we discussed before. Everyone okay with that moving forward? Okay.
Okay.
Nope? Okay.
No for me.
So we have a one no? Two no's?
Yeah, no.
You're a no?
I'm a no.
You're a no, so that's three no's? We have four no's, okay.
I think we have four no's also.
Okay. So we've got five no's on that one. So Resolution 2, we are not recommending. And, Dr. Scanlon, please don't be shy, jump in here with your comments. Okay. Proposed Resolution number 3, supporting proposals aimed at addressing the cost and administrative burdens of legal actions related to special education placements and services. Everybody comfortable with that moving forward, or anybody want to pull that one out? Okay. 4, supporting incorporating pre-kindergarten funding into the school aid formulas used for K-12 education. How are we on that now, that we've talked about it?
Yeah.
We're all, everyone's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. 5, produce and widely recommend the adoption of a board policy or language to be added to the district policy related to child abuse training, basically child abuse training. Anyone object to that? New York State School Boards Association opposes proposals to raise the number of charter schools authorized by the state. Anyone want to pull that out?
Can I comment on that?
Please.
Just for the benefit of the general public. So, again, when a charter school opens in a school district, whatever the state allocation is given to that district, the charter school pulls that money out of their budget, and it goes to them. So unfortunately, sadly, in some of the districts that can ill afford to lose state aid, they're, when these charter schools goes up, they're losing even more of it. So when you see these astronomical amounts of aid going to certain districts, if there are charter schools in that district, they're getting a big chunk of that money.
Thank you. Okay, so 7 is all about testing, modifying the way that we do state testing. Anyone have an issue with the way that that is worded? Nope? Okay. 8, advocate for the number of lockdown drills to be reduced from four to two each year. Anybody want to call that one out? Okay. 9, supporting legislation which would allow the creation of a regional high school when determined by local boards of education to be educationally or fiscally appropriate. That's more of an upstate thing. Anybody have an issue with that?
We're outies.
Okay, we're outies, true. 10, in light of the extreme heat-conditioned days unfunded mandate, New York State School Boards Association supports the state providing school districts and BOCs with the necessary funding to allow for air conditioning and appropriate electrical needs in all public schools.
Gosh.
Anybody want to change that? Okay. 11, supporting the state to safely incorporate AI into curriculum and district operations.
I don't, I don't like that one.
Okay, we have one no for that one.
I can explain very briefly. So, okay, if teachers want to use AI, experiment within their classrooms, they're running classrooms, that's fine, right? But I don't think the district at this point in the technology should be, district or the state at this point in technology should be encouraging to do this. And I mean explicitly, there's things in here I really don't like, like grading papers, these are like teacher responsibilities. There's a lot of money that's going to be coming, and it's already here, to push AI into classrooms. And, you know, I've seen things, some districts are buying like devices where like kindergarten kids can read to them and they'll comment on their reading. The whole, the, the marketing is that they get more individualized attention on this, right? Because the teacher can only do so much. But, you know, the downside is, this could become, the device gets sent home instead of parents reading with the kids, it's like they're reading to devices, or why, why do the teachers reading to them at all? The devices should be there. You know, the, the technology is very new, we can, you know, rule number one for me of being a board member is, don't screw up, don't screw it up, right? Like, we have a good school district, we can afford to wait one or two years, let's, let's see how the other districts do, let them experiment with their kids, and, and then if it works, great, we can adopt it then, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be okay. So, so I would oppose this.
I vote yes on this, because I'm a fan of AI, and I, I use AI tools which take care of a lot of tedious work that I think human can work on more fun things. So, also, I, I consider this as calculator. When calculator came up, there was debate about whether we're not using, and now everyone's using, so this is my opinion.
My feeling on why this was a good thing was, it's already being used. I mean, everybody already is using it, so oversight, guidelines, putting up a few guardrails didn't seem like a bad idea to me. Anyone else? All right, so do we have just one, one no? Okay, sorry, Stan. All right. 12, opposing proposals that would provide tuition tax credits or educational vouchers that benefit private or parochial schools. We okay with leaving that in? Okay, 13, advocating for the reinstatement of whole milk as an allowable option in school breakfast lunch programs. I can't believe, of all the things, this was one that had to get written up. Are we okay with whole milk coming back? Okay.
Move.
Move. Advocate for amendments to the New York State Education Department regulations to allow a set amount of daily recess time after 30 minutes per day to count toward required instructional hours for elementary students. Stan, I figured you probably loved that one.
They were against it last year.
I know.
And now they're for it, so I think it's going to happen. That's good. More recess.
Anybody want to pull that one out?
No, 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 no.
That's not what that says.
No.
It says, not more recess, it says recess council. So if, again, just from an educational standpoint, the secondary level in the state of New York must complete, it's not 180 days, it's 990 hours, and the elementary must complete a minimum of 900 hours. So the old days of, oh, 180 days of school, that's a fallacy. So with incorporated into that, or not incorporated into that, is passing time at secondary levels does not count for the amount of hours, nor does lunch. So those are out. So that's why they're talking about this, adding this in to help count as time. And from counting as instructional time within that 900-hour piece for the recess, 990 at the secondary level. We don't have recess at the high school.
And I believe it's also starting at 20 minutes, so, which is what we currently have.
Yes.
So anybody want to pull that one out? We're all okay? All right. 15, advocate for substantial increases in state reimbursement rates for out-of-district special education placements to reflect true and current costs. Everyone okay with that? Okay. 16, seek and promote legislation to reform current legal notice publication requirements, and I'm sure Mr. Mano would probably love that. Make that a little easier for you. Everyone okay with that one? Okay. 17, limiting a district's potential annual hold harmless phase out to no more than 2% of their district budget, even if doing so extends that district's overall phase out, period. Anybody not okay with that? Okay. 18, advocates for a budget threshold to protect rural districts with low enrollment and large geographical footprints in the foundation aid formula. Anybody? Okay. 19, supporting legislation allowing school districts to receive compensation from the New York Liquidation Bureau for liability insurance claims arising out of claims brought under the Child Victims Act in cases where the insurance company holding the policy became insolvent. Okay, I'm leaving that one in. 20, an amendment to New York State law that would authorize public school districts to establish the fund, health insurance reserve funds through board-approved resolutions. Any comments or thoughts on that one? Okay, 21, urge the New York State legislator to amend the General Municipal Law, Section 6 Jade, to explicitly include boards of cooperative education services, BOCs, among entities authorized to establish and maintain workers' compensation reserve funds. Anybody? Okay. 22, support legislative or regulatory changes to add financial literacy into the statewide K-12 curriculum with additional state funding. Anybody? All right.
Just on that one, the funding should help to be part of the recruitment efforts for, because finding business teachers right now is just as hard as, those are the areas where, it used to be science, math and languages. Today, it's family and consumer science, E&amp;L, facts and tech teachers. If you have a child going off to college for, become a teacher, tell them to go that way. We get 400 applications a year for English positions and social studies positions. We get maybe a handful for all those other positions these days. Not a lot of students going into those fields.
Okay, and the last one, 23, supporting legislation that allows school districts to choose to authorize school medical directors and their clinical designees to evaluate, diagnose, temporarily treat and prescribe medications for students. Anyone calling that one out? Okay. So all the rest in the packet are the ones that NISBA is not putting forward, rather than exercising too much time here and going through those. Is there any that anybody wants to try to pull out and pitch for? Okay. So we hand that off to you, Dr. Lee.
So we also have to vote on the amendment to the bylaw of the NISBA. So the first and third, just asking them to do more reporting. The second is interesting, asking them not to do any recommendation or not recommend anymore.
Yeah, yeah. So does anyone have any comments on any of those? They're up in the front of the packet pages, I think 10 through 12.
I have comments, but I'm, I'm okay with what the committee recommended. But it's, it's basically that, it's sort of like, my, my feeling is, is this sort of like a write-in candidate in an election?
Yeah.
Where it's like legally, sure, we can override the recommendations, but in practice, we spend a lot of time reading these, going through them, discussing them. Every district does this in the state, and in the end, they just adopt what the committee recommended. That would be a waste of time. But it sounds like sometimes it does get overridden, so, so maybe it's still okay.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, then I'll assume we're okay with all three of those, and you have your marching orders, and we thank you very much. It's a lot of time Dr. Lee gives up to do this, so thank you, we appreciate it. All right. That brings us now to our public comment, period. If I call your name, would you please join us over at that microphone over there? Susan Blake, you're up first.
Hi, thank you all for your jobs and dedication to the school, truly. As stated in my previous letters and talks, I am 100% opposed to arming our schools. Actually, the thought of it makes me ill. So to better understand the situation, not to sound completely naive, I do have some questions, of course, to be addressed at another time, answered at another time. How does the vetting of guards go? Most are retired police. Is there a background check on their history and their conduct, or is it a private agency that sends out armed security? Do they supply their own guns, or does the school purchase them? And who does the daily check on the gun's safety and the proper functioning of it? Are there frequent daily checkups on the mental and physical capacity of the people carrying guns in our schools, and who would conduct those wellness checks? Do the guards stay in one position, or do they roam the crowded halls with concealed weapons? Will there be armed guards with the four-year-olds? Will there be staff or community nepotism involved in the hiring of these guards? Who is liable should a guard accidentally harm or kill a student? How many guards would be in each school? Will they verbally engage? Will they be chatting with the students? Are the teachers and parents telling their students' children that Three Village is an unsafe school and community, and we need the guns to keep them safe? I encourage the board to remain vigilant and keep guns out of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And since those are pretty specific questions, if you want to give Ms. Germano a copy, that would be helpful. Thank you. All right, next up, Christine Latham.
Hi, thank you. My name is Christine Latham, and I have two children currently at, in school. One is at Ward Melville, and one is in Murphy. I also would like to speak about the upcoming vote to arm the security in the schools. I'm not going to quote any studies or statistics. We all already know that definitively, all the studies say that the schools are safer without the armed guards. What I would like to mention, which was already mentioned today in this meeting, was what happened in Uniondale a few weeks ago. The student brought the loaded gun to school in a backpack. It was caught by the metal detector. The student was detained and arrested. No guns were drawn, and no shots were fired. In Brooklyn in 2021, a student also brought a loaded gun to school. It was detected by an X-ray machine, and the student was arrested. No guns were drawn, and no shots were fired. In 2022, a teenager in the Bronx brought a loaded gun to school. It was caught by a metal detector, security detained the student, and he was arrested. No guns were drawn, and no shots were fired. I could go on, since there are countless stories like this, but of course, I think my point is pretty clear. In each of these situations, guns were not a factor in preventing a tragedy. Metal detectors, advanced technology, and security protocols are far more effective at actually preventing an incident than armed guards. If a student has a gun on their person, as opposed to in a backpack, I am confident that our experienced security guards, who we all know are all former police officers, could neutralize the threat quickly. No shots fired, no deaths, no memorials, and I think that's what we all would like. So my question is here, if Uniondale can do this, why can't we? Uniondale High School actually does have around the same amount of students as Ward Melville, just over 2,100 kids. Why is this achievable there but not here? Why are guns the answer, even though we know they aren't the answer? This discussion started a while ago because a student accidentally brought a gun to school. While that student should of course be completely commended for turning it in immediately, the fact of the matter is, if he had wanted to cause harm, we would have had multiple casualties before an armed guard would have reached the classroom. But if we had metal detectors or X-ray machines, that gun would have never made it into the school in the first place. While I have not always agreed with the decisions made by the board and the administration, and you all know that, I truly believe that all of you, every one of you up here and back there, want our students to be as safe as humanly possible. But what we don't want is less casualties. What we actually want are no casualties at all. Arming a few guards will do nothing. Using the excellent security and defensive protocols we have already will be much more effective. I urge parents and students to be vigilant and to report any threats or rumors to the administration. I urge students, especially if someone you know is struggling, tell someone. And I urge the board to consider that arming guards is not the best way to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sarah Huda.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm here today as a parent. I'm a taxpayer and a neighbor. I am also a former student, Dr. Scanlon. You were Mr. Scanlon when I had you.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, we both changed a little. I'm here to speak about the guns at school. I love our school, and I fear for the safety of our children. I think everybody on either side of this argument ultimately wants safety for our children. Of course, that's always our number one priority. I'm asking urgently and unequivocally that our district reject any policy or budget that allows concealed firearms on campus. If this becomes a part of the platform, I will definitely vote against any budget that has that, and I will support leaders who prioritize proven and evidence-based safety measures. I understand the impulse behind it. I think we're all desperate to protect our children, and we're looking for an answer, but guns do not make schools safer. I think there's countless studies that tell us that. There's no proof that arming staff prevents shootings, but there are a lot of mounting studies that show that it increases risks. There's accidental discharges, there's confusion, and as said earlier, we're humans, people are humans, mistakes are made. Bulletproof windows, that can't harm a child. Metal detectors, I understand the budgetary concerns, and obviously, I'm not privy to all that, but I'd rather hear about direct facts and data than just feelings of, you know, how much it would cost, you know? I, I think that that would be much more helpful. Sorry. I think that what we need, and what we already know works, is threat assessment teams, expanded mental health for our students, social and emotional learning programs, and smarter security measures. I understand that we can't have metal detectors at every door, but having single-point entry, I would rather put my money towards that than, than arming somebody that, you know, might in an emergency act just as foolishly as I would. This is not ideological, this is not about politics, it's about our kids. And even if we don't agree on the path, I think we can agree that kids deserve classrooms where they feel secure because they are cared for and supported, not because there's hidden firearms in the room. I urge you all to act with courage and compassion. Look at the evidence. Listen to the parents, listen to the teachers, mental health professionals, and law enforcement. And I hope that we come together as a community to give our children schools where safety comes from trust, respect, and care, not from weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will try to get through the letters that were sent in, if time allows. The first from Shoshana Herskowitz. I watched the September 17th Board of Education meeting and was deeply dismayed by the discussion around armed guards. I understand the fear in our community surrounding our children's safety. However, as I've said before in my previous comments, the data and research all points to the fact that guns in schools actually make children less safe. A letter on this topic was submitted to you last year with the signatures of several hundred community members and taxpayers opposing guns in our schools. This is an educated community, home to one of the nation's finest public research universities. Ignoring the data and the research of experts on this topic because of fear should not be the direction our district takes. I object to the poorly designed and distributed survey that didn't include every resident who pays school taxes being the driving factor in this decision, rather than the reams of data and evidence that guns in schools make our children less safe. Many of you on this board are educators and researchers. You wouldn't use this flawed survey for your own work. How can you make it the driving factor in a decision on our children's safety? I bought my home in this district in 2006, before I had children. In the two decades that I've lived and owned a home in Three Village, I have never missed a budget vote. I have voted yes on every single proposed budget. I voted yes to piercing the tax cap. I voted yes on the budget revotes. I voted yes in the years when budgets barely squeaked by, like 2022, when the budget passed by a mere 66 votes. And I have done so because I believe in public education and have been outspoken as a parent and educator and an advocate. If armed guards are included in how we spend our tax dollars, I will not be able to support school budgets any longer. I will vote against any budget and any board member who supports this ill-advised measure. I will not support spending my tax dollars on security theater that makes our children less safe and that flies in the face of all the data and research. I urge the board to reject this and make safety decisions based on facts, not fear. Next is from Deborah Little. I write to you as a district resident and parent of two young adults who were educated in Three Village Central School District. Our children were very well-served by the teachers and communities in the school district. One is in graduate school for PhD in sociology, and the other works for the Cornell Cooperative Extension. Both have been able to pursue their passions. My husband and I have been residents of the district for 34 years. We vote in every election, both for the budget and for the school board members. We are both opposed to the implementation of armed guards in our schools. You already know that there are no studies supporting the use of armed guards to stop school shootings or reduce the number of injuries and fatalities. There are not many studies because the government refuses to fund them. However, if the ones that exist find no reduction in injuries and an actual increase in deaths in schools where armed guards serve. There's an article attached. While any school shooting is horrific, we must not succumb to panic. The data do not indicate that our children are at risk, and data matter. The best way to keep our children safe is to continue to build empathy, offer quality counseling, and provide anti-bullying programs in our schools. Our tax monies are much better spent on these programs. I remind you again that I always vote. I have always supported the Three Village Central School District budget, whether I had children enrolled in the schools or not, but I will not vote for any budget that includes money for armed guards. Let's be kind, let's teach empathy, let's use, dare I say, common sense. This is from Brian Latham. I'm writing to urge you not to adopt a policy of arming the Three Village security staff as a solution for school safety. I am not opposed to guns in general. I grew up in a rural community, and guns were a normal part of my life. However, I also pride myself on using research and data to inform my decisions in life and teaching. The available research shows that placing more guns in schools does not reliably reduce the likelihood or severity of shootings, and in fact, increases the possibility of violence taking place in the school. First, there is no persuasive empirical evidence that arming school staff deters school shootings or makes schools safer. Systematic studies on public health reviews show that allowing armed staff in K-12 settings have not been demonstrated to reduce shooting incidents. Studies from the Rand Corporation, the CDC, Everytown Research and Development, and the JAMA-OPA Network all refute the idea that arming security or staff does any actual measurable help in stopping violent actions. Second, introducing more firearms into a school environment creates additional pathways for harm. Firearms in schools can increase the risk of accidental shootings, firearm theft, and impulsive or facilitated self-harm. Public health analyses, including CDC reports, document the greater firearm availability is associated with higher risks of unintentional injury and suicide among young people, and that unsecured firearms in places children access are a frequent factor in tragic outcomes. Having guns on campus makes us a target for people with mental disease who are seeking out suicide by officer. Third, there is a belief that everyone becomes John Wick when armed and given some training. While everyone is worried about mass casualty shootings in a school building, the likelihood of one armed person stopping an event like that is exceedingly low. Even highly trained officers make mistakes and poor decisions in a highly charged event like a mass shooting. These errors can harm students or themselves. While it is not truly data, anecdotally, you need only look at events like Marjorie Stonem Douglas, Uvalde, Columbine, and Santa Fe, to name a few. In fact, JAMA-OPA Network has found that 1 in 4 mass casualty shootings between 1992 and 2022 had an armed guard on campus and was unable to stop the event. Their campuses are also associated with higher casualty rates, a 2.83 times higher rate when those incidents occur. Fourth, arming staff can complicate and slow law enforcement response. Research and practitioner reports highlight that armed school staff can create confusion for responding police, who must quickly identify friend from foe, and may increase the chance of tragic friendly fire incidents. Surveys of law enforcement and first responder perspectives indicate concern about encountering legally armed staff during an active incident. Fifth, there are well-documented collateral harms from increased policing and weaponization in schools. School resource officers, SROs, and armed staff are associated in some studies with higher rates of student arrests and more severe disciplinary outcomes. For these reasons, I respectfully recommend the board, number one, reject policies to arm and train security personnel. Two, invest in secure, non-weaponized physical and procedural protections, i.e. entry control.
Three minutes is up.
Thank you. The next is from Tamara Bagel. I completely oppose having armed guards at Three Village School District. There have been accidents in schools where guns were left by employees within the reach of students. Students are already traumatized by gun violence in schools. Seeing guns regularly in their school environment will be bad for children's mental health. Even if we have former police officers as security, that doesn't mean that they stay up on their training for shooting in chaotic environments, that there will not be collateral damage. How will the district ensure that training, operation, and storage of the firearms are maintained? Three Village has already reduced the number of security guards in schools. This is more harmful because less ground can be covered by the guards. It reduces response times and doesn't make our children safer, since there will be less adults to direct students and respond to events. Having armed guards will not make up for less people. Also, guns can be wrestled from the hands of the individuals who own and operate them. This increases the liability of injuries. What will having armed guards do to our insurance? Who pays if somebody is accidentally shot? Three Village has not needed armed guards. Let's put that money into having increased security team members and demand our legislators pass responsible gun ownership laws, like gun storage requirements, having ammunition stored away from the firearm, insisting that all gun owners have licenses, training requirements, and insurance. If you need these things for a car, you should need them for guns. Next is from Jackie Gazdijian. As a parent in the district, I write to express my opposition to having armed security guards in our schools. I have a son in kindergarten at Minisaki, I'm a class parent, a member of the PTA, and a member of the superintendent's task force to combat racism in our district. Arming security guards does not achieve school safety. Armed guards in schools don't reduce fatalities. In fact, shootings at schools with an armed guard ended with three times as many people killed on average. Whenever firearms are present, there is room for error, and even highly trained officers get split-second decisions wrong. Article linked. Researchers from the Violence Project examined 133 school shootings and attempted school shootings from 1980 to 2019. At least one armed guard was present in a quarter of the cases studied, and researchers found no significant reduction in rates of injuries in these cases. Another article linked. The Rockefeller Institute was quoted as saying that, quote, "Unfortunately, not every person who wears a badge or carries a gun belongs in a school," end quote. Rather than spending scarce resources to deter the unlikely gunman, it's better to invest in prevention, such as hiring more teachers, guidance counselors, and school psychologists." And another link. Existing security personnel would need to be replaced. I've spoken with the captain of the Suffolk Police Department, who was previously in charge of firearms training, who informed me that existing security guards may not pass the rigorous training that would be required to safely possess a firearm in a school, which means many of the guards who know and care for our children would need to be replaced. Optics and reputation for the Three Village School District would change. Many parents moved to the district because of the schools. Dr. Scanlon recently sent out an article about our district's stellar ranking in Suffolk County. If our district brings guns into our schools, many parents may choose to leave the district, and other parents considering a move may choose to look elsewhere. This will affect our school's ratings and our property values. The board must take that into consideration when deliberating this decision, especially in light of the lack of benefits to arming guards as outlined above. The board cannot afford to arm security guards. The district already collects a significant amount of tax revenue from residents. This revenue is already not sufficient to make repairs and other needed improvements in the schools. As the board is aware, this is why there is a need to raise additional funds for these capital improvement projects. Additionally, the governor of New York continues to threaten funding levels for school districts on Long Island, and our funding stream is by no means stable. The board must consider other collateral expenses. The New York State School Board Association wrote, quote, "Deployment of armed guards has the potential of exposing a school district to new liabilities. When making a decision to have armed guards, a district should also consult with its insurance professionals and carefully review its insurance policies to ensure that adequate amounts and types of coverage are provided for accidental or intentional discharges of a firearm," end quote. Article linked. Intentionally bringing firearms into our schools would not only drastically affect the environment in which our children grow and learn, but it is a considerable expense that would require redirecting funds from educational resources and counseling toward hiring, training, and arming guards. I, along with many of the parents in the district, strongly urge the board not to bring armed guards into our school. The next is from Mary Ellen Schneider. We are writing to you in strong opposition of having armed guards in the Three Village School District. As parents of a current 10th grader in Ward Melville High School, we share the community's concerns about the safety of students in our schools. However, we don't believe that armed guards will be an effective way to prevent or to respond to gun violence. Research indicates that the presence of armed guards does not result in safer school environments and suggests they could even make things worse. A recent study linked here examined every case from 1980 to 2019 where at least one person was intentionally shot in a K-12 school, or someone came to a school heavily armed with the intent to harm. The researchers found that armed guards were present in nearly a quarter of the schools, and the death rates were more than double at schools with armed guards. The researchers explained the findings this way, quote, "Whenever firearms are present, there is room for error, and even highly trained officers get split-second decisions wrong. Prior research suggests that many school shooters are actively suicidal, intending to die in the act, so an armed officer may be an incentive rather than a deterrent," end quote. Bringing guns into our schools, even when handled by trained security staff, also leaves the potential for them to be misplaced or mishandled. The Gibbards Law Center documented nearly 100 incidents of mishandled guns in schools in just five years. Everything from leaving a gun unattended in a school bathroom to a gun falling out of a holster. Finally, we believe placing armed guards in our schools could give the community a false sense of security, creating less incentive for investments in prevention strategies that could potentially have a greater impact on school safety, such as increasing social work staff and offering additional mental health supports for our students. Next is from Rachel Sizak. As a parent in the Three Village community, I share your commitment to keeping our schools safe and our students protected. While I understand the desire for stronger security measures, I do not support introducing armed guards into our schools. Research consistently shows that the presence of armed personnel does not reduce school violence and it can increase risks. Instead, I encourage the district to focus on consistent, evidence-based safety practices across all schools, similar to the effective measures already in place at NASCAIG, to help prevent individuals with harmful intent from entering our buildings. I also believe it's essential to continue creating opportunities for students to share their concerns during social-emotional learning, SEL, drop-ins, and other supportive spaces where they feel heard and safe. I urge the district to approach school safety with research-driven, community-focused strategies that prioritize prevention, trust, and student well-being over reactive measures. And last is from Natalie Anatol. I'm writing as a concerned parent to express my strong opposition to the decision to introduce armed security in the schools of Three Village. While I fully understand and share the priority of ensuring our students' safety, introducing firearms into our schools is not the most effective or evidence-based solution. Studies show that the presence of armed personnel on school campuses does not reliably prevent or reduce violence. does not reliably prevent or reduce violence. A 2021 study published by JAMA Network Open found that schools with armed security were actually more likely to experience higher rates of fatalities when shootings occurred. Additionally, the presence of guns increases the risk of accidental discharge, misuse or escalation in situations that could otherwise be safely de-escalated. There are also emotional and psychological consequences to consider. For many students, particularly those who have experienced trauma, the daily presence of armed guards can heighten anxiety and contribute to a sense of fear rather than security. Instead of introducing firearms, I urge the district to prioritize safer preventive measures such as securing school entrances with improved access control systems, visitor check-in procedures and locked vestibules, installing metal detectors or weapon detection technology at main entrances to deter and identify potential threats, expanding mental health support, including more counselors, psychologists and social workers to identify and address issues before they escalate, investing in staff training for threat assessment, crisis response and de-escalation, building strong relationships between schools and community police trained in youth engagement without an everyday armed presence on campus. These measures directly address safety while maintaining an environment where students feel supported and focused. I deeply appreciate your commitment to protecting our children and respectfully ask that you reconsider the decision to arm security personnel exploring these proven alternatives instead. I'd welcome the opportunity to discuss this further. And that concludes our public comment period. Thank you, everybody. All right, that brings us now to our policy sections, plural. We will turn it over to Mr. Mistacki.
Thank you. Um, on for first reading for the Board of Education tonight are policies in the 400 series, allocation of space for special education programs, independent evaluation, educational evaluation, availability of alternative format instructional materials for students with disabilities and partial hearing officer appointment and compensation, confidentiality and access to individual education programs and services. On for second reading tonight is the board's policy on diploma and credential options for students, teaching about controversial issues, assemblies and animals in schools. Uh, these policies have been reviewed by the district's policy committee. They've reviewed by council and I'm available to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moves on to our consent agenda, item 12.
I'm sorry, are you going to vote on the second?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, our second reads. Okay, so that would be 11A, 11B, C and D. Do I see a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? No opposed, no abstentions. All right, those carry, thank you so much. And now to our consent agenda, do I see a motion? And a second? All right, and we'll begin with B, Ms. Germano.
Okay, B is the certification of the budget vote in the election for the MS Clark Library that was held on September 17th for the 2026, um, operating year. The budget did pass a total of 536 yes and 84 no.
Thank you so much. And C?
C is just a minute from the last board meeting of September 17th.
Thank you. Any questions?
What was the count for the library vote again, sir?
The total count for the library vote, the ballot boxes with 388 yes, 148 yes for absentee ballots totaling 536 yes. No for the ballot boxes, 37. Absentee ballots, no, was 47, total of 84 no. So 536 yes, 84 no.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And beginning with D, Mr. Carlson.
Uh, item D is approval of an agreement, uh, with a Douglas Elliman Commercial Real Estate. This is to list, uh, several of our properties, uh, for sale. Uh, this is in accordance with the recommendations from the Property Analysis Committee. Uh, this firm is well-known in the area of commercial real estate. We had done a request for proposals, uh, and also got some, uh, good, uh, recommendations from, uh, uh, people that we have, uh, discussed with, uh, who are, who are familiar with the, the firm. Uh, item E is the acceptance of the independent orders report as Mr. Smith from EFPR Group presented tonight. Uh, this is, uh, accepting the report. Uh, then tomorrow, what, um, what I do is we submit the, uh, financial statements and audit report to the State Education Department and the Office of the State Comptroller, uh, after which the, um, auditing firm will, uh, issue it in final, uh, final form. We'll distribute one to each board member, uh, and we post that to the district's website. Item F is a secret determination in connection with, uh, our, uh, 2025-26 capital projects. Uh, secret is the environmental impact, uh, determination made by the board that in this case there is no, uh, environmental impact. This is for, uh, uh, work at Nassau CAG Elementary School, um, mainly in the parking lot off University Drive. If you've driven back there, you know that's in desperate need. Um, and some flooding, uh, drainage improvements as well as paving. Uh, and then we had the two classrooms within the building where the floor slab, um, sunk down. There was, um, uh, when the, when the school was originally built, um, I don't think the soil was compacted properly, so there was a void underneath and, uh, the floor sunk down. So it would be to, um, uh, dig down through that, uh, shore it up and, and replace that. So that's all part of, uh, what we included in this year's budget, the one and a half million dollars in capital projects, it was included in that, so.
Any questions about either of those?
Actually, I had a question, kind of segueing, segueing into the bond, um, that we have.
Sure.
Um, we know we're going to be talking about the bond in upcoming meetings because we want to do a vote sometime at the end of this year, early next year. Um, but we did, just so everybody knows, that the board, the board did ask for you and administration to see if we can come back and try to get that number down a little bit because 120 million seems a lot and we really need this bond to pass because a lot of the, um, items on there are very vital to the, uh, school district. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we did get those numbers back from you and we will be looking at what those recommendations are and we'll be discussing them at an upcoming meeting.
Sure. So in the, in the, uh, items that we, um, if we wanted to get the, the total amount of the bond under $100 million, the, the things that we would recommend taking out, uh, we tried to stay away from, uh, any of the, uh, building roofing repairs that are needed, cupolas, uh, anything boiler room related. Um, those are more, more pressing needs. Um, all, all of the work that's in the, in the whole scope of the bond is all work that, that needs to be done. Uh, we tried to take out things that maybe could be put off for a couple of more years. In some cases, uh, items taken out, um, such as, uh, tennis court replacement at the two middle schools. Uh, the high school, uh, was left in there. The high school athletic facilities are more, um, more of a pressing need. Uh, so we left those alone. Um, uh, some of the, uh, ceiling replacements, we just reduced instead of not, not take out entirely, but, but we could spread that out over a little longer period of time. Bathroom renovations, uh, instead of taking out entirely, we just reduced the, the number of them. Um, same thing that can get, uh, done over a longer period of time. Uh, the, the, um, paving and sidewalks at Ward Melville are in better shape than the other. Jolinas doesn't have any pavement and sidewalks in the whole bond scope because that was all redone, uh, just before COVID. Um, so that's not even in there. Uh, Ward Melville's paving and sidewalks are in better shape than the other schools. So that would come out if we were to go under $100 million. But along with that though, if you recall back to the last meeting when I was, um, uh, talking about the phase-in of the debt service on this, if you recall, we'd be phased in and then over several years and the work itself would take several years to do and would get fully phased in during the 2930 school year. If you remember, in the 2030-31 school year is the first year of our debt service, uh, decreasing by $4.6 million. That's the payoff of the 2007 bond. So what I would say is, especially if we were to reduce the scope of this bond to under $100 million, what we could maybe commit to is then, when the, when the debt service is decreasing by $4.6 million, put that right into capital that same year. Uh, it would have no tax impact. Um, as we know, the debt service and capital projects are outside the tax gap anyway. Um, but it would have no tax, it wouldn't increase taxes. It would decrease in debt service, put it right into capital. Um, and that way we can, we can keep the work going that, that needs to get done and the work that would get taken out to get under $100 million, we can just pick right up and start doing, doing that year. So that would be our recommendation if we were to go that way.
So just a point with that for a moment is that this is not saying that any of these projects are not needed. They are absolutely needed. And the recommendation for administration would be that if that would be the case to reduce this down, we are going to have to have with that long-term planning, a plan to increase the capital budget every year. $1.5 million, the district that has nine buildings and occupies 22 square miles is not enough money. And that's just a yearly maintenance cost to keep some of these buildings up. The buildings are very old, um, some older than others. As I'm aging, they're aging. So it's, it, I know I'm getting a lot worse, uh, so they are not in the same condition. And we have to, long-term planning, the materials that are around today will be better than some of the materials that the buildings were built with. Particularly when we look at the cupolas, they're all made of wood. Not a great plan to just paint wood and keep it up in the Northeast and think it's going to last for 50 years. So we have to have some real major consideration. And I know this will become up as a vote of contention because the board has in the past reduced down the capital budget to get the, the percentage increase below 3%. We may not be able to afford to do that if this is all taken out. Just to make sure that we're clear about that before we enter into this area.
Understood, of course, and, um, thank you. I know it probably was a hard ask, but we, uh, we appreciate it. Uh, any other questions about that or any of Mr. Carlson's items? Okay, so we'll move on to G, Dr. Bhaskari.
Uh, this is just the recommendation to adopt a revised roster of, um, eligible hearing officers provided by New York State Education Department.
Thank you. H, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, subcommittee in 504 Accommodation Plan Meetings as dated. And I, recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education Meetings as dated. And beginning with J, Dr. DeBruski.
Yes, uh, J, few considerations, a resolution to approve the Personnel Action for the Employee Identified in Confidential Schedule A that was discussed in executive session. K is a resolution recalling additional access to teaching assistants. We have two more that, uh, we need back. L, Personnel Items Instructional, we have one instructional retirement, eight instructional resignations, uh, five teacher subs, three teacher assistant subs, two instructional leaves of absence, that's a music and a fax teacher. Uh, we have six instructional appointments, which are the two teaching assistants you, part of them are the two teaching assistants you see here. Eight instructional substitute appointments, several coaching, volunteer coaching, co-curricular sponsors and annual extra assignments for 24-25. M, Non-Instructional Personnel Items, we have nine non-instructional resignations, uh, two non-instructional leaves, leaves of absence, one non-instructional appointment, uh, five non-instructional stipends, which include SCA assignments and EMT recertifications and several, several hourly extra assignments for 25-26 school year.
So just, uh, as a point, Dr. DeBruski's done a remarkable job trying to keep track of all these things as you've gone through for the budget for the year. Last year, we had 40 leaves of absence among faculty and staff. This year, we're, we're not out of the month of October yet, we're up to 21. So it's only going to get larger as the year goes on. Part of the odd crop of having a senior staff that is being replaced by a younger staff, these young people have this crazy idea that they want to get married and have kids. I don't know what they're thinking, uh, but that's going to happen more and more. So as the staff starts to get replaced, we're going to see more of those leaves and that leads to higher costs. And as people are watching our numbers when they reported to SCD, those change our numbers when it comes to reporting for our beds day data that goes to the State Education Department.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. DeBruski? All right, so are, do we have all in favor for 12A through M? Any opposed? No abstentions, thank you in that case.